So, thank you for having me here today. Joe Patton, Director of HR. And this session is to recognize our employees for their years of service. So what we had planned to do is to, once we call the employee, we'll say something about them if they are present. They'll just come up here to get their certificate and their PIN. And then they'll come over here at the, next to the flag and stand and wait for everyone else, and then we'll all get a picture with them. So, first is Richard Erp, Community Development, five years with the city. He's in the Planning Division. Richard began working for the City of Apopka June 5th, 2017, as a city engineer. He continues to serve our community in this position today. Richard was born in Gulf Breeze, Florida, and moved to Central Florida in 1989 to attend the Disney College Program. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Health, Leisure, and Sports from the University of West Florida, as well as a Bachelor of Science degree in Civil Engineering from the University of South Florida. He's very proud of the work he has done streamlining and modernizing the engineering division. One of Richard's fondest memories involved assisting an elderly resident following Hurricane Irma to help restore both her hot and cold water due to electrical damage. In his spare time, Richard loved to spend time with his two perfect daughters, son-in-law, and grandson. You may also find him out jogging a 5K a day. Wow, 5K a day. Next is Earl Hines.
Earl Hines.
Earl's Fire Department, Fire Suppression. He's celebrating 10 years today. Earl began his career with the City of Apopka on June 4th, 2012, as a firefighter first class in suppression. On April 14th, 2019, he was promoted to fire engineer. He continues to serve in this position today. Next is Jared Best, Emergency Medical Services, 15 years celebration today. Lieutenant Best began his career with the City of Apopka on May 13th, 2007, as a firefighter first class for suppression. He was transferred to EMS on November 17th, 2010, as a firefighter first class. On December 3rd, 2017, he was promoted to fire engineer, and then to fire lieutenant on November 3rd, 2019. He continues to serve our community in this position today. Next is Eric Howard, who is accompanied by his wife Danielle. She didn't want me to mention her name, but I did. So, Eric began working for the City of Apopka on June 2nd, 2007, as a firefighter first class. He continues to serve in this position today. Next is Gerald Jerry Maynard, Fire Department, 15 years celebration today. He's a fire chief officer. Lieutenant Maynard was born and raised in Rochester, New York. He moved to Central Florida in 2005, and attended the Fire Academy at Mid-Florida Tech and Paramedic School at Valencia. He began his career with the City of Apopka as a firefighter first class in suppression on June 20th, 2007. He was transferred to EMS on December 15th, 2009. On October 22nd, 2018, he was promoted to fire lieutenant stationed in the fire chief's office, which is his current position. While working for Apopka Fire Department, his most notable achievement is being able to be part of the Summer Youth Fire Camp Program. Lieutenant Maynard's fondest memory of working at the City of Apopka is getting the chance to meet and work alongside the men and women of the Apopka Fire Department. He can truly say the bond built between firefighters here is unlike any he has experienced, and it is a blessing to be part of this second family. When not at work, Lieutenant Maynard enjoys spending time with his beautiful wife of 20 years, Jessica, and their two daughters Hannah, 13, and Olivia, 9. The Maynard family also have a black lab named Louis, who works as a therapy dog for the department. He enjoys volunteering with the Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce and Loaves and Fishes. Jerry is also a fan of the NHL and enjoys watching movies. Next is Christopher Clutter, Police Department, in Field Services. He celebrates five years today. Corporal Clutter was born in Jacksonville and raised in Coral Springs. He moved to Central Florida to attend the University of Central Florida in 2003, where he earned his Bachelor's of Arts in Criminal Justice. He began working for Apopka Fire Department on June 12th, 2017, as a police officer. On December 6th, 2020, he was promoted to lead police officer. He serves in this position today. His fondest memory of working with the city was being promoted to corporal and scoring second on the recent sergeant promotional process. He also enjoyed working under the direct supervision of Sergeant Barry Brown. He states that Sergeant Brown is an outstanding leader, and that they have shared many entertaining experiences which he will carry with him. In his off time, Corporal Clutter enjoys spending time with his amazing wife Sydney, their two daughters Adeline and Parker, and son Cole. He is an angler with the Deep South Kraken and the Kayak Fishing League, and participates in various fishing tournaments. Next is Irvin Jerez, Police Department, five years in Field Services. Officer Jerez was born and raised in New York. He moved to Central Florida in 2006 and attended Lake Technical College. He began his career with the Apopka Police Department on May 8th, 2017, in Field Services, and he continues to serve there today. Next is Kenyon Friedline, Police Department, celebrating 10 years in Support Services. Officer Friedline joined the Police Department on May 21st, 2012, as a police officer in Field Services, where he is today. Next is Michael Mike Rudick, Police Department, celebrating 10 years in Field Services. Corporal Rudick was born in California and raised in Mililani, Hawaii. He moved to Central Florida in 2007 and began his career with the city on May 21st, 2012, as a police officer. On November 27th, 2016, he was promoted to lead officer, where he continues to serve today. When not at work, Corporal Rudick enjoys spending time with his family and friends, including his wife Jen, stepdaughter Adriana, and dog Zeus. He also enjoys traveling. Next is, celebrating 20 years, is Glenn Brooks, in Public Services, wastewater treatment plant. Glenn began working for the city on June 10th, 2002, as utility service worker one for wastewater. After a series of reclassifications and title changes, he was promoted on March 1st, 2015, to Chief Operator. On October 22nd, 2018, he became the Water Resources Utility Operations Manager, and continues to serve in this position today. Although I think you had a position change, didn't you, recently? Yes, which I can't remember. Which I should, but...
It's okay. There was a few in between.
There was a few in between? We didn't count those. We didn't count them. So, you said you lost your hair during this time, so, at some point. So, next is Cynthia Edwards, celebrating 10 years in the Recreation Department. Cindy is a native of Apopka. She graduated at Apopka High and attended the University of Louisville. Cindy began her career with the city on May 29th, 2012, as a rec leader one. She was promoted to secretary two on November 4, 2012, and reclassified as office supervisor on February 4, 2019. On October 14, 2019, she was promoted to rec supervisor, which is her current position. Cindy is proud to have helped create the partnership with Advent Health in 2020. She has enjoyed meeting the wonderful people of this community and was glad to be part of two playground builds. She also looks back fondly on the first spring camp at Camp Weewa. Cindy and her husband have been married for 18 years. They have five children and a brand-new granddaughter named Myla Page. They have two dogs, Teddy and Gus Gus. I thought that was a double thing, but I left it in there. And one cat, Sebastian O'Malley. When not at the park, Cindy enjoys spending time with her family, going to the beach, gardening, and kayaking. And those are our celebrated employees for this quarter.
All right. (APPLAUSE).
Why don't we go ahead and we get a picture with everybody?
Picture.
Come right when the picture comes, huh? I see.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's whatever.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Congratulations.
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 That's wonderful.
That's wonderful.
Congratulations.
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 And again, the grass is waist-high. The next property I can talk to you about is the Connolly House on Dream Lake. The city owns it. Today, the grass is to the top of my shoulders in the backyard. There's no privacy fence. There's mold and milder growing up the side of the structure. Anybody that looks at these structures that belong to the city say, wow, the city doesn't take care of its structures. And the last one I wanted to talk to you about, I went and looked at on the way here this morning. Somebody actually cleaned it up. The old Cobb Printing Building. The windows are broken out. There's a colony of feral cats living inside and outside the building. Nobody cleans it. I'm out of time. I've got a whole lot of other stuff. The last thing I want to say is I want to request that Mayor Nelson be censored in all activities with the city regarding property deals, zoning, planning, and permitting. His dealings with families, trying to coerce them into property sales, and hassling widows, his attempt to get to Ms. Rudine Taunton before she passed, his attempt to get to Mrs. Bray to have her sell property that is adjacent to the city's, his bullying of Mrs. Sumner and Mrs. Page. He's recently tried that one, too. The man is doing things outside the scope of his coverages, Mayor. He doesn't bring the council up to date. He approached Mr. Sumner-
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. New. Appreciate you.
I'll be back.
Okay.
You're not done.
All right. Anybody else, Susan? Okay. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda. We've got 13 items. Any of those need to be pulled? Or are we good? If so, look for a motion to approve the-
I just had a quick, uh-
Sure.
Just a quick comment. It doesn't need to be pulled or anything, but we're authorizing two reappointments-
Yes.
Of the planning commission, and we're about to appoint slightly none of them. The only thing I want to bring up again is just finding a definition for hardship for them, to give a direction for them. It's been brought up to me a few times that they just don't know where to go, and it could open us up to litigation. I'm not determined, I'm not going to say whether or not it can, but they've been asking for a definition of what hardship means so that they don't have too long discussions. I know you've been in those meetings and understand what I'm talking about. So, just something that we can do to be able to direct them correctly so there's not a lot of confusion moving forward.
We're looking at including language to that effect without it being too specific because then you make a matter worse. But it's something we're considering in our next Land Development Code glitch bill-
Perfect.
-when it'll come before you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? If not, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thirteen items.
Go move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we need to designate an official voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference.
Well, I was interested in performing that task.
Okay.
So, I'm kind of asking my commissioners, would they support me in being that delegate?
I do.
Sure. All right. Commissioner Smith, you want to make a motion?
I'll so move.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bankson to appoint Commissioner Velazquez as our official voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Well, thank you to all my commissioners. Thank you for the support. Although I volunteered.
Thank you for being willing.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. We recently had a gentleman named Mr. Green that retired. Jim Green, I believe he's already over in New Smyrna Beach, enjoying retirement biking and walking on the beach. As a result, we do have a vacancy on the planning commission. They do not come up all that often. We've found that our planning commission is probably one of the best commissions that I've ever worked with in 37 years of doing this kind of stuff. And so, we've got an opportunity to get somebody that had run for an office here for the city. And we are pleased with getting Wes Dumey as a planning commission member, with everybody's approval, of course. These are three-year terms. And that's why during the consent agenda, we had two other people that I had contacted to make sure they still wanted to serve, and they do. So, it's a once-a-month meeting unless we have a whole lot of items, and then we do call special meetings for those opportunities. But it's the second Tuesday of each month for those of you that would like to join us.
Any questions for Jim?
I just had a quick comment on this, too. It'll be brief. I know we were looking when we were trying to fill this position. It was, we were saying geographically within the city, we don't want to fill certain areas. Or we're too filled in one area. There's nowhere in our code that specifically dictates districts or anything like that. So, and it does specifically dictate that somebody with real estate experience, things like that, should they be available, they should get priority. So, either we need to change it, or add it, or do something just so that, again, it kind of gives a more concise, clear understanding of what we need to be looking for in new members as we move forward. Because again, that's nowhere in there. Although I understand the point. It's just not in here, and I think we need to add it if that's going to be our goal moving forward.
It probably would be a little bit harder to do it since we don't have districts. You're right. Because otherwise, you can point to certain size places in the map. So, it is, we obviously like representation from different portions of the city, which we've done pretty good. You know, that was the map that we had sent out. But yeah, that's, it is something that we'd have to look at to see how we could, say, north, south, east, west, or something like that.
Or even some, I mean, it can be similar to when we were discussing the hardship, that it's not a hard definition, but just something of, we don't want certain members to be living within X amount of miles or something from each other radius, just to help stipulate that a little bit more. Again, it goes towards just, there's no ambiguity. We understand the expectations clearly moving forward. That was it.
Thank you. Okay. Just need an approval. Anybody want to make a motion?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith to appoint Wes Dumey as the planning commission for a three-year term.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Chief Wileman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Today, we're bringing forward the C-MAR Agreement Services, or Construction Manager at Risk for Station Six. Back in 2016, we secured a contract with Miller Construction Management as the C-MAR for Station Five. And part of that was retainment of Miller as the continual use for the pre-construction contract services. This company will work with our design firm, who we have hired already previously, which is Lund's. This is going to help us work through the pre-construction process. And they've told us to have a deadline of three to four months to give us our GMP, which is our guaranteed maximum price. So, this time, we're just asking permission to execute the pre-construction contract for $29,283 with a 7% contingency. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
We're using the same design as Firehouse Number Five?
Yes, ma'am. This is the construction company. The design Lund's we bought for the last month.
All right. So, with five being, how many years now? Is it five years old? Number five?
Seventeen, yeah.
About five years old.
Five to seventeen.
Are there any more improvements or any tweaks that we feel that we're going to do with six?
Yes, ma'am.
We are-
Currently, that's why we're putting the construction, the pre-construction contract in place so they can work with the design folks to figure out exactly what those changes are going to cost and get everything in play.
And that will come before us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to authorize the fire chief to execute the pre-construction services contract for Station Six with Miller Construction Management, Inc.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
This next item, again, Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. This next item, little bit of a change-up regarding the, not really regarding the request, but the timing of the request. This is, back a couple of months ago, we had talked about the Gator Grower property on the north side of Lake Henneger, not Lake Henneger.
Shepherd.
Shepherd Lake. Across the lake from Camp Weewah. We had gotten an appraisal for the property. There was a environmental level one that was completed. A level two is also completed. And as part of this request, we're asking city council to recommend approval to proceed for negotiation and purchase of the Gator Grower site not to exceed $800,000. That does not include the additional cleanup that would be required in accordance with the environmental study. One of the things, though, that we did find out is that there is apparently a contract to buy the property already. And in case that property buyer does fall through during their due diligence, we never know how that's going to occur. We kind of want to be waiting in the wing to be able to negotiate the purchase of the property to complement the Camp Weewah portion of that side of the lake. Now, as part of this, I put together a little bit of a map for it. Just make sure we're on here. There we go. So, this is the Camp Weewah is down here. We were looking to possibly put a gate here. And then this is the Gator Grower's site here. You can see there's a lot of buildings on the north side of the shore area. And then, one of the general plans for Camp Weewah there, one of the general plans that we had kind of sketched out was to be able to have parking coming off of the road here, entrance, drive-in here. We were looking to possibly do a gate here for special events and extra parking for events over at Camp Weewah, and then a series of pavilions also on the north shore. And the other thing that we were looking at was to preserve the, there's some palm trees there that were actually seedlings that were brought over from Israel. So, that's, the whole idea is to make some preservation and historical nature for the property itself. And I'm here for questions.
So, I guess-
Stop that session. Something broken up.
Please silence all phones.
My bad.
So, anyway, we just found out over the weekend that they had a contract that was firm. Well, they had a contract, and then it firmed up over the weekend. I guess by giving them the Phase Two audit, it wasn't as bad as, you know, we, I guess, everybody might have thought it might have been. And so, they firmed up the offer for an end, well, I guess, of one residence with some, they're going to grow leachy nuts. So, anyway, but I would like to, you know, my thought is if at least we had a backup, if the commission agreed to it, we have a backup offer. If something falls through, that we could close on the property sometime in the future. So, that's kind of where we're at today.
I know. We all kind of sat with you, and we discussed this. But the one question I didn't ask, and I should ask, is, this is as a backup. Does the seller agree to sell it to us?
Well, the seller would have to agree in order to sell it to us.
Say that again?
The seller would have to agree to sell it to us.
Why would she have to?
We can't take it. We aren't going to take it. We aren't going to condemn the property or take it. There's no other way for, the seller has to sell, has to agree to sell.
No, her question is, does they have to sell it to us? And the answer is no.
Oh, no. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was the question. Because has she, you know, has the owner, because I know it's the widow. And obviously, she's already contracted with a seller.
You mean a buyer?
What?
With a buyer.
With a buyer. I'm sorry. With a buyer. And if it falls through, has she agreed?
We won't know until that falls through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the way it's being read here is that if that falls through, then we're buying it.
No.
No?
This just says, staff recommends approval to proceed with negotiations to purchase.
Oh, negotiations. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I missed that word, and that's exactly-
That's quite all right. Yeah, the whole idea is that if that contract does fall through-
Right.
-whether or not somebody else is looking to buy it, we could still negotiate and try to get the property.
Okay.
And obviously, for me, you know, we're fiduciaries for the city, for the citizens' money. And I just want to make sure that we do get the best deal. And at the same time, weighing this as an opportunity, there's not any more property next to what we have right now. I think it's a real benefit to be able to surround that lake with beauty and opportunity for the people to use it. From what I'm seeing here, it looks like the end expense is going to be about $980,000 once we have to do the cleanup and removal and just the different expenses that I saw here. So, that's based, the value is based upon about the same price per acre of what we already purchased at Weewah.
Correct.
And now, we have appreciation. So, basically, that $180,000, is that about what appreciation should be?
That would probably be right around there, you know, just based on the home values and price of property in the area that, you know, just over the last year now.
And we also think we can get some cleanup money to help. And there's a chance we could get purchase money like we got, you know, for Weewah. So, I think there's, that's the high end. I think we could, we theoretically could maybe reduce the overall cost.
Worst-case scenario, still a good purchase on behalf of the people if it comes open.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But this is basically allow you to do those negotiations and seek-
Rather.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
I'm in favor.
Here we go. Mr. Nesta?
No, I mean, I had a couple of different comments, but the fact that it's already under contract kind of slows us down quite a bit here. So, and then, you know, I guess, to what extent, let's say they have a 90-day due diligence period, are we going to get another appraisal, things like that? Or is the seller going to require us to do another appraisal? Or what does that look like? What do you guys think? I guess with your communication you've had.
The, well, the appraisal, I had to make sure about the date. I don't want to misquote here. Oh, I can't find the date on the appraisal.
I mean, the appraisal is only as good as what the next best comp is, you know, effectively. So-
Typically, the appraisals are good for at least six months. So, if we wanted to get another appraisal, you know, we could. It's probably, it would probably end up going up a little bit more. But that would, I don't think it would benefit us that much to get another appraisal.
And I agree. And that's, yeah, I'm definitely not recommending it more so just was that, just trying to build our expectation. Because we're in a weird scenario now to where we're just coming in as a backup offer, which doesn't put us in the best position.
Right.
So, and then obviously, I had concerns over the environmental, what was there? The asbestos, and then what the Phase Two brought up as well, that there are costs associated with that that aren't built into this $800,000 request. So, and if we can find some additional funds, too, like the mayor was saying, that would be awesome. I didn't realize those would be available to us. So, that would be great to tap into as well. And then I liked the fact that it's not just a Camp Weewah. It would be a kind of a public park, effectively.
Well, I mean, my whole goal with this is that when Camp Weewah is running overnight camps, obviously, we can't mix non-credentialed adults in that camp. So, it would give us, you know, the families that want to go out to Camp Weewah, they'd have a place to go. And then, when we weren't having overnight camps, then you could mix and match across-
Sure.
-both properties. So, that was kind of my vision and why it made some sense to purchase that.
It also extends our proportion for green space. Do you know how much percentage that really adds to us in the overall picture?
Yeah, level of service. I don't have the total numbers, but as our population grows, we do need more green space in order to get the correct level of service in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So, it's definitely can't hurt at all.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Kyle Becker, 1388 Kentla Road, Apopka, Florida. Maybe I just don't see it in the lead-in packet, but what's the cost? Well, I don't want to ask a question because I shouldn't expect an answer right here. But it's going to be over a million dollars for this piece of property. And you've got a lot of structures on this piece of property with, I don't know if I've heard plans of how to deconstruct those, demo those, clear those. And once those are off the property, what's the plan to actually reconstruct anything that you all are describing? We bought 70 acres worth of birding park years ago with the idea of stuff being built upon it, and it's still sitting dormant and blank. So, why are we spending a million dollars on this piece of property with no clear direction of when and why we're doing it? That's my two cents.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to let staff negotiate for the purchase of Gator Grower's nursery if the contract that they're under falls apart.
Well, and quick question to just follow. I guess what, because this is a really weird scenario. So, we're saying to negotiate, but we're really not negotiating anything right now.
Right.
So, is this just in perpetuity that we're, should it ever, let's say they're in a six-month due diligence period, just at any point, this-
That's fine.
Is that, okay. I'm just trying to understand what-
We could put a time limit on it.
Sure.
If you want to do a six-month, we could do that. And if we need to come back after six months, we'll come back.
No, I mean, that's-
Which would probably be good, because at that point in time, then the appraisal would probably need to be updated. So, that's actually a good point.
May or not be, may or may not be higher.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I don't know how to adjust that properly, but-
Sure, sure.
He's going to amend the motion to put a six-month time limit on the offer to negotiate.
And again, to speak concerns mentioned, that was that $180,000 I was talking about. That does include the demolition and all those things, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, public hearing ordinance number 2937.
Ordinance number 2937. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, providing for the abandonment of the Kelly Park Crossing development of regional impact and its associated development order. Providing for findings of fact, providing for the abandonment, authorizing staff to record and transmit the ordinance of abandonment, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes.
Any questions for Jim? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2937.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2938.
Ordinance number 2938. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending ordinance number 2858, which is known as the Ridge Plan Development, generally located north and south of Boy Scout Road, west of State Road 451, north of State Road 414, and west of State Road 429, comprising 407.8 acres, more or less, owned by Troy S. Bronson Family LP, Bronson-Troy S. Life Estate, Apopka Centerline Development LLC, KS Apopka Centerline Development LLC, DRPFL LLC, AGEHC IILEN Multi-State I LLC, and Ridge 429 Owner LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon again. This is for, the ordinance is 2938. I won't bore you with the, all the owners again. But the applicant is VHB. Erica Hughes is here to represent the applicant. It is located on the north and south side of Boy Scout Road, west of State Road 451, and north of State Road 414, and west of State Road 429. The future land use, there's a mix here. It's residential low with a maximum of five dwellings per acre and a mixed use of 15 dwellings per acre and a 1.0-floor area ratio. It's all currently vacant, other than a lot of the orange trees from the Bronson property. Current zoning is PD. This is obviously one of the reasons we're here today. It is 407.8 acres. The property itself, there's just a couple of small changes that we're looking at. The current site is all of this portion in black. We are adding this portion here with about 44 units, single-family. The development itself, one of the keys that we were, that staff was concerned about was a dead-end type scenario here. And they, there's some property over on the eastern northeast corner here that's owned by the Hoopers. And we wanted to make sure that that had connections to it and out of it so that we can create a loop system if the Hoopers decide that they want to build or add to their property. So, we've got one stubout here, and then one stubout with this new section up in this area here. Along with this portion, there were also two small slivers of property that were, that were being added into it right along here and along here. Those are the, I think one of them was about a quarter of an acre, and the other one was a little bit, little bit more than half an acre, or about an acre. So, we're adding those portions in. And we also have-
Explain why we're adding those in.
The original drawings and surveys that were done for the property did not, they shaved a little bit. So, in addition to that, we are putting in a, another intersection here. I shouldn't say we, but-
CFX.
Yeah, CFX is putting in another connection feature here to the 429. So, that itself will also help with connectivity, getting people off the local roads in order to get them to work on a little bit easier route versus having to go through town all the time. There's also, we're adding a couple of different uses. Because of this type of an intersection, we're adding a couple of different uses to parcel six, which would include car wash, a cigar shop, restaurant, fast food, some flex space, and a potential park and ride. We don't know what we're going to have yet because it's all still in the planning stages, but this gives us some diversity for this property over here. And other than that, that's, those are the mains, those are the main changes that we're looking at for this, for this change. We will also be bringing back, or bringing the Community Development District approval. There's a couple of changes that we need to make with that. Those will be coming back at the July 27th meeting. Again, remember that? I just said the July 27th, not the 20th. So, just as a reminder.
Okay. Any questions for Jim?
Just the two entrances at the north. I just want to make sure we don't ever end up with another Mount Sterling situation. So, those, basically, anyone who moves in there will understand that that's going to be future access.
Yes. One of the things that happened because of that, every development that we have that has stubouts, we're requiring signage there, and then something in the owner's documents that says that this is a future right-of-way connection. So, we learned our lesson pretty good on that one.
But it's low probability that somebody's going to actually develop on that north side, just seeing how kind of the floodplain is, correct?
Well, there's, the floodplain does run up right along this area here. There is enough room for probably about 15 homes, probably. So, if, you know, the Hoopers, the other thing is we have to provide access to that property because they do own it, and they did have previous access through easements. So, we're providing that access, and if they ever did want to sell the property So we were providing that access, and if they ever did want to sell the property for, you know, some, some home sites, they've got that opportunity. And they can tap into the water sewer lines that are there, that will be there.
I know they're also looking at trying to re, where is Richard here?
Yeah.
I know they're trying to look at the flood maps and see that they're gonna adjust them. I know that, that whole area. So there might, may or may not be more property based on revised flood map.
The applicants also did contact the Hoopers to see if they'd be interested at this stage. They are not. But again, staff wanted to make sure that we had connections to those, to that property.
Okay.
And let me ask you, they are providing right away along the Apopka Accord Road for expansion of that road, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And then my second question is, the housing development that's on the east side of Boy Scout Road, there was some concern about that entrance, that was, has that been addressed?
I don't remember any.
Breckenridge?
Are you talking about Breckenridge?
Yeah.
Yeah. When they do, when they start construction out there, they agreed to, one of the first things they'll do is put turn lanes there. And I did talk to Breckenridge a couple of weeks ago. And they're very enthusiastic about turn lanes in and out of their site. So they were putting those on Boy Scout. It's, it's in the agreement. They have to do it.
All right.
Good memory. Forgot about that part. Any other questions? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2938 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2944.
Ordinance number 2944. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044 the here-and-after described lands situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Ronnie B. Phillips and Wanda R. Phillips, located east of Okoye Apopka Road and north of West Keene Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Christian Togmas, Community Development Department. This is a request to accept ordinance number 2944, the annexation of 2309 Okoye Apopka Road by Jonathan Hughes for Ronnie B. and Wanda R. Phillips. The parcel is located at 2309 Okoye Apopka Road, east of Okoye Apopka Road and north of West Keene Road, and abuts properties in the city to the north and to the west. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance number 2944 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 27th, 2022. And staff is available for questions. I'm not sure if the applicant is here. I don't believe so. Would you like to speak? No? Okay.
So this is Christian's first opportunity to be in front of city council. So it's a chance to really get him. So if you want to get him, right now is your time.
Please don't. No problem. Just give me a second.
We don't want to hear anymore.
Well, if you saw, if you saw his, the shirt he wore, was it yesterday, the Mississippi State shirt? I told him that I've got a Gator shirt he could wear, but.
No, thank you.
I'd like to run down on the analysis of all the future land use categories.
Oh, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2944 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job, Christian. Okay, ordinance number 2947.
Ordinance number 2947. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044 the here-and-after described lands situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Kelly Park Self-Storage LLC, located south of Kelly Park Road, ROA, and west of State Road 429, specifically 316 West Kelly Park Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Again, Christian Togmas, Community Development Department. This is a request to accept ordinance number 2947, the annexation of 3612 West Kelly Park Road by John Herbert for Kelly Park Self-Storage LLC. The parcel is located at 3612 West Kelly, West Kelly Park Road, west of State Road 429 and east of Golden Gem Road, and is adjacent to properties in the city to the north. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance number 2947 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 27th, 2022. And staff is available for questions. If the applicant has any. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? No? Okay.
Any questions for Christian? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2947 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2949.
Ordinance number 2949. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 58 Solid Waste Article 2, Municipal Refuse Collection Services, Division 2, generally Section 58-67, Fee Schedule Residential, to establish a rate schedule by amending Chapter 58, Article 2, Division 3, Commercial Establishments, Section 58-103 Fee Schedule Non-Residential, to establish a rate schedule, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Good afternoon, Michael Rodriguez, City Attorney. The ordinance before you here today is an amendment to the existing fee schedules for both residential and commercial Municipal Refuse Collection Services. This is another ordinance along the lines of the others that were previously adopted by this council to streamline our Code of Ordinances to establish the fees for such services and that the fees be adopted by resolution instead of it being codified within the Code of Ordinances. So the amendment is merely taking the language out of the code at second reading. So it'll be at the next public, at the next public hearing of the 27th. After the second reading of this ordinance, the resolution will be presented to you establishing the fee schedule. What this ordinance does is it authorizes the city council to establish fee schedules by resolution. And you will have a resolution establishing these fees next meeting. So there won't be any time in which there will be no fees at this time. So this is just another, in our efforts to streamline and make the code a lot more efficient and make city business also much more efficient. Do you have any questions? I am here to answer them.
Any questions for Michael?
Do we have any other, we've been doing this a lot recently. Is there anything else that, on the ordinance side, that we're gonna be switching to resolutions that we can, that we need to get ahead of?
Application fees for planning and zoning, we're gonna be doing those. We've already got a comparison for a lot of the local cities and counties that we, that are bordering, bordering Apopka. We'll be putting some finishing touches on those. We don't want to go too much higher, but we are way low compared to just about every city.
Right. And those will just be, just my experience, the previous jurisdiction I worked on, our fees were, those fees were, they were scheduled, they were adopted by, by resolution, so we'll be streamlined. So I think this may be the last one when it comes to our utilities. Don't hold me to it. I'll double check. But I believe we've done all of the other ones.
Okay.
So far.
Cool. Yeah, I was just trying to see what, what else, just to, we're doing these one at a time. Let's knock them all out at once and create the streamline that we want. So.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right. Any other questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2949 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, city council reports. Commissioner Nesta, you want to start us out?
Sure. First thing is, just our prayers are going out to Apopka firefighter Austin for his quick recovery. I think we, he's had something like four surgeries so far, very intense surgery. So making sure that we support them however we possibly can to make sure that he recovers as quick as possible. Next, I've got a couple of things at the Northwest Recreation Complex. Just, I spent a lot of time out there. So there's a lot of different things that I see. One cool one that we've added recently was changing, baby changing stations to men's restrooms. I know not everyone up here cares, but it's a big asset to me, and I'm sure other fathers in the community that I don't have to do it on the floor anymore or anything like that. So that's very nice and very cool. Parks and Rec was able to step on that and knock that out for us. There's also a couple of other repairs up at the complex that I had said, hey, you know, can we, can we just address these? And it was like two days. And it was a big project that I asked, like, hey, this is kind of looking a little rough. And they got to it. It looks awesome and brand new. So that's very cool. Couple kind of big headliners coming to our city, which I really think is incredible, but we're kind of sleeping on. And again, this may not be your, your choice of music, and that's okay. They're very good artists. Dirty Heads is coming July 16th. Very incredible concert, concert. I think it's supposed to be something like 2,000 people are coming. So huge for us. Is it more than that?
Way more than that.
And that's incredible. I saw VIP, which was kind of a little bar section, things like that. And that's already sold out. And it's very incredible what we have. I mean, it's a really world-class center we have, a complex. So and then we also have 90s Fest coming at the end of July, featuring the Ying Ying Twins. Absolutely incredible. Again, may not be your cup of tea, but I think it's awesome. So very cool that they're coming.
Just for you.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. This weekend, Hope Community Center, they're hosting a celebration of Hope's New Americans. Basically, they're new U.S. citizens who participated in their pathway to citizenship program. They're, they're basically just celebrating them. Sort of an Independence Day for, for them as well. So I think that's very cool. I'll be there. It's from 12 to 4:00, and I think the event actually starts at 2:00. I think it's like a barbecue, things like that. We have a Realtor event next Thursday. So any agents or anybody that wants to learn about the real estate that's going on here in Apopka, it's being hosted by the Chamber, so please come, sign up. I know, I think you're on the.
Panel.
Thank you, the panel. So that'll be very cool to hear. And last week, I know, you know, or last meeting, we had spoke about just kind of a misunderstanding of how, or at least on my end, of how schools are built. Where's our funding going, things like that. So I met with school board member Melissa Byrd last week and, and had a really productive conversation. Helped to educate me a lot. And I asked, please, can you come speak to our council just to help explain again? And so she promised that she'll have one of her staff members come explain and hopefully be able to help educate us on, on that process and things like that, and be able to ask the questions that we want to ask. So that's it for me.
Commissioner Smith?
I just want to start off by saying it was a great Fourth of July celebration that we had on the Independence Day. And someone made the comment that the city must have spent some more money because the celebration was a lot greater than it was the year before. So we appreciate those positive comments. Also, want to say that, you know, I served on the superintendent's advisory search committee. And so we do have a new school superintendent that has been selected that will be taking over here in Orange County. And so we're looking forward to some great things in, out of our new superintendent. And of course, you know, I mentioned about we need some more schools in the city of Apopka. So we're gonna keep pushing towards that. I also want to say that we still need to look at maybe how we go about implementing a state of emergency as far as it's concerning our rent. I still have residents constantly coming and saying that rent is just going out of the sky market, and we're going to create more homelessness as a result of that. A husband and wife that has two kids, rent is going up 35% at the end of August. And they're gonna be homeless as a result of it. And so I think it's worth, us taking a look at seeing what we can do. Someone said that we had our heads stuck in the sand that we weren't doing anything. But I want you to know that we are paying attention, and something that we need to address. That's all I have.
Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, of course. With what happened with Austin, our hearts are all with him. I was actually chaplain on call that day, and I just want to comment about our, our force, both police and fire. They're just amazing. It's a family. They came together. And we're just so grateful that he's doing well. Keep the prayers going for him. And again, yes, you know, we need to always look at how can we do things even better. And, you know, I'm always about, let's make the best better. And so I know that's a hard and a concern for everybody because we want to look out for our own. Yes, the Fourth of July was amazing. And it just gets better and better. And, you know, to your point, I like the fact that we're having just a variety of things to offer for our citizens. I think that's just improving. And, and actually made contact with a fellow that I knew years ago that he's in Nashville, a country singer that has a lot of contacts. And so I said, well, here's our information about our Apopka Empathia. You know, I just believe this is gonna continue to where we're gonna be a major attraction, which is gonna do great for our area businesses as well. So I'm excited about that. Of course, for me, Operation Curb Appeal, that's what I'll call it. Nicole gave me some homework here, you know, for our Keep Apopka Beautiful, and I'm excited about getting our community team members involved in that. And again, got a response from Alan Jewell, one of our citizens there, and brought out that, about our signage out of Alonso Williams, just letting people know, don't litter, it'll cost you. And so I know that staff, I contacted staff, and they're looking at where can we put these around? We just need to take care of our city, and it's gonna benefit us, not just be pleasant to live in, but again, be attractive for economic development there. And just anything that we can do. For me, again, is if we can't find a way to make that consistent here, I still want to make sure that we're open to, at least that our curbs, our sidewalks, the weeds and the, the cleaning of those, that we can make sure that we have a consistency there. So I'm excited to see this go forward and what we can get done through here and what we can't. Let's make sure and accent that. And again, same issue as far as our homeless situation. I had talked with, with our staff, again, at what projects are in the works, and there are things being pursued. And so I think that's on all of our heart and our agenda. And, you know, having that workforce housing, I know that the new budget, the state budget has made some, a lot of resources available for that. And so I'm hoping that we can work together in that public and private partnership to, to see that and get ahead of that curve. So that's it for me.
All right. Commissioner Velasquez?
You guys covered everything. You did. Nesta kind of stole the thunder of everything that's going on at the theater. But again, it, this week was certainly about Austin Duran, and our prayers are with him. And just wanted to say that, you know, when we go to their oath of office and their promotions, the one thing that we do promise our first responders is that we will take care of them. And if he is listening and, or his family, please know that he is in our thoughts, and we will take care of him. And we wish him all the best. And we know that he's made it through a few surgeries. And I'm happy that he made it through all of them. And now it's, it's a long road of recovery, but we want him to know that he will not be forgotten, and we will, we will be with him through this recovery. And then the Fourth of July, we, it was a great turnout. I also went to the First Baptist earlier in the day, had a Fourth of July, and they had a huge crowd. And I was happy to see that happening on this side of Apopka. And of course, our Fourth of July, I got there at 5:00 in the afternoon, and it finished almost about, what, 10:00? So it was a long day, but it was well attended, and we had a lot of fun.
All right. Under the city administrator's report, Edward will have his last radiation treatment on Monday. So he'll be ringing the bell Monday sometime. And so we're, you know, thankful for, you know, this, you know, this journey he's been through, that it's, you know, everything's, he's done well, and doctors are, you know, excited about his progress. And so, you know, we're, we need him back because we're about ready to have to roll up our sleeves and get on the, the budget for this year. A meeting with the directors Monday night, a dinner to talk about the budgets. We've, we've got most of the expenses in, the wants and the needs. We've got most of the revenue in, but we don't have it all in. But so we hope by Monday we'll have it so we can start really kind of figuring out, you know, how, how much out of balance we are. Because, you know, with the needs, or with the wants, we know we're gonna be out of balance. It's just, then we have to go back and, and work with each department to collectively as to, okay, you know, maybe one department gets something that they, you know, that they need more importantly than somebody, another department that could maybe wait another year. So it will be a, you know, we'll, we'll get through it. I think we're, we're in, we're in a great position. And we've, we're just looking at the numbers. We've reduced our overall indebted, our, our debt payment by 1.2 million. So there's a million two that we're freeing up, along with the money, you know, the extra money we're getting from Ad Valorem. So got more money coming in. It's just, there's all, there's still, there's always priorities and always, you know, wants that, that everybody would like us to, to cover. And we can only cover what the revenues allow. With that, Michael, anything you want to bring up?
Yep. The only thing I want to briefly bring up, so it was a week ago Friday, the city was served the lawsuit from Southwick Commons. We are proceeding, we, we filed a claim with our carrier, and they are providing co-counsel to effectuate the defense of the action. So we'll proceed. I'm, I'm not going to discuss any litigation strategies now. At the time when we will discuss certain litigation strategies, I will call for an executive session to discuss those. The Southwick Commons has also filed a concurrent, you probably have received notice, a concurrent administrative complaint with the Fair Housing Authority. We will also proceed forward in defending the city. As to those, that is a provision, again, without going into exact strategies. I actually believe that administrative complaint has less merit than their complaint that's filed in circuit court here in Florida. But I wanted to update you that we have been served, and we are proceeding forward to defend the, the city and the action. Aside from that, there's no other updates from.
You got a question? No, but I just remembered something that I don't want to miss. The orchestra, Sunday night.
Yes.
Oh, I forgot about that. I missed that.
They were phenomenal for our local group. Frank did a great job. I just, I didn't want to miss.
Yeah, yes. Good, good, good.
Thank you. I forgot about that.
Okay. Mayor's report. Got a bunch of, a couple of things here. Update on the city's Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. Got seven members now. Got two more I'm trying to add. So we have a very, very well-rounded committee. So I think you'll be, you'll be proud. And we'll, I'll bring that back hopefully next committee, or next council meeting, depending on how it, you know, how that goes as far as the budgets and all that. Next up, House Bill 1431. It was great. You know, Stacy and I both, having served in the legislature, kind of knew how to finagle around the legislature, get a bill, you know, up and running. And we were right down the wire when we found out that another city in the local area was, had one. And we were trying to piggyback off theirs, and we couldn't. So we had to come up within a couple of days and get a bill out there. So between Stacy and I, we got 1431 in, in, in the hopper and ended up passing, which is gonna give a lot of opportunities within our CRA, which is obviously our area of most need. So those restaurants will be able to, to buy a lesser alcohol license that, for, from going from 150 seats down to 80 because right now, from the 80 seats to 150, the license could cost you upwards of $150,000. And so this one is basically, I think it's an $1,800 cost with this, the new, with this bill passing. So we got a lot of opportunities. Anybody in the, you know, CRA that wants to, you know, put in a restaurant, you know, I think this will, could be the difference between people making it and breaking it in the restaurant business. Status regarding the federal grant funding for the pipe replacement. Status regarding the federal grant funding for the pipe replacement, Congresswoman Demings has got it through, now it's to the full house floor, it's $2.5 million, which will replace all of our asbestos and galvanized pipes, our water pipes. So hopefully we can get that through the House and then it'll confer with the Senate to get that done. So that would be a great addition and we, you know, we've just neglected infrastructure. I mean, these pipes are the original pipes, I mean, these could be 40, 50 years old, maybe even older than that. And so it'll be great to get those replaced. Along those lines, we've also got, it's now, it's moving up the ladder at Orange County, we've got a million dollars, we think hopefully we'll get passed for an affordable housing complex that we hope, excuse me, single-family homes to be built here in Apopka, hoping that gets done. We got the CDBG grants, there's the, we got the three grants, we got the $800,000 sidewalk one, the $250,000 sidewalk one and the $750,000 rehab ones. We're just trying to put all the pieces together, make sure we've got the RFPs out for those that want to bid on those projects. So we're excited about getting started on those events. July 4th, we already mentioned, July 3rd, we mentioned, just a great day, Camp Weewa. If you get a chance, tomorrow night around a little before dark, we're going to, they're going to be singing some of the old Camp Weewa songs, which I got to go out there Sunday night, it was kind of a, kind of a cool night to go out and listen to, got a couple of the former campers that remembered the songs that are now counselors. But we're averaging almost 110 day campers every week for the whole summer and we're at about 40 overnight campers, so doing really, really well out there and just, what a blast the kids are having. And you get, you know, and you ask each one of them what they enjoy the most and it goes from rock climbing to fishing to canoeing to Gaga Pit, I mean, you know, everything that we've got out there, they're mentioning. So it's just been a wonderful summer for a lot of kids that, you know, probably can't get those kind of activities anywhere, you know, in the local area. Next up, Harmon Road closure, want to let everybody know tonight, the Harmon Road between or underneath the State Road 429 bridge will be closed to make modifications as part of the 429 widening project. So it will be, closure will start tonight, it'll be tomorrow night and Friday night from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So 9:00 PM to 6:00 PM, it's that little gap underneath the 429 on Harmon. So just, it's up on the website and we'll be, we'll be, you know, kind of pushing that out again. And then, and then a couple last things as it relates to Austin Duran and Karina Martin, which I haven't been, hasn't been mentioned, but one of the firefighters, his wife had an incident during childbirth, anyway, is doing much better, I think she got out of the hospital yesterday and so we want to keep her in our prayers as well. So I know July 23rd, the three odd guys are going to do something as a benefit for Austin. August 6th, it's kind of interesting, had a great time over at Porky's Barbecue with the guys from The Monsters of the Morning, Russ Rollins and his team, and we were talking about, you know, what they do and what, you know, what they're trying to get more involved in Apopka because a couple of the gentlemen live in Apopka. So The Monsters of the Morning said, hey, let's put together something, you know, so I said, okay, well, just, you know, with this, the tragic accident and the other mishap, I said, you know what, I reached out to them and they have just, they're on board, you know, 110%. So The Monsters are going to be putting on something at, on August the 6th. So we hadn't got all the details yet, but it'll be out at Jason Dwelly at the amphitheater. So not only will be The Monsters of the Morning, I think the whole team at 104.1 is going to get involved and so we're, we're looking at, you know, all kinds of games for the kids, activities, but obviously we're trying to raise as much money as we can for Austin Duran and Katrina Martin. So it'll be split 50/50 between the two families. So exciting time and so come, you know, come out on August 6th and support our two firefighter families. With that...
I have one question.
Sure.
I see the sign that says something is going to start happening on 441, some construction, what is that?
We're going, want to talk about that? It's, yeah, on, between Central and, yeah.
I think that the sign that you're talking about, you're going to start seeing the construction on the northern piece, which is from Jones, south to Connector Road, they'll be doing resurfacing there. And then we have our piece from Bradshaw Road to Central, we've already had the kickoff meeting on that, that's where they're going to add the medians. It's a little bit further behind, I was going to come and give y'all an update on all the goings on so you'll know when you're going to see construction and what they're going to actually do. And I have a surprise part two, but I'm not going to spoil it today.
Thank you.
Awesome. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you.